Okay, it's two o'clock. I'd like to tell the financial personnel meeting. What? I do.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hopefully, everyone had a chance to read the maps. Move. First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Twist. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. That's that. First item up is PC 1, resolution authorizing professional services contract, real property tax office and the treasurer's office. Move for discussion.
Move.
Second.
First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Twist. Any questions? Anybody want to say anything?
I'm going to say, real quick, the next step in making online access for tax bills through real property to the treasurer's office. And make it so as to close the foot traffic down to the treasurer's office and the property. I'll cover the first year out of my budget and I will work on the future expenses for the other departments.
Understood. Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Any carries?
Thank you.
And then public safety, PS 1, resolution authorizing the addition of one person and the deletion of two positions in the sheriff's department.
Move on.
First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Lockwood. Any questions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Any carries?
Thank you.
And skips from one to three, is that correct?
Yep, it is two goes to the legislature.
Gotcha. Resolution establishing salary. Resolution establishing salaries for the assistant district attorney. Right?
Move.
First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Wilbur. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Any carries?
Thank you, everyone.
Resolution for PS 4, resolution authorizing the creation of one position and the deletion of two positions in the E-911 department. Move for discussion. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Holt. Any questions? Can we just grill a little?
Safety's my office.
Any questions, Mr. Carroll? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Any carries?
Thank you.
About safety number five. I think everyone should have a copy of this. Okay, the resolution authorizing the addition of three corrections officer sergeant position. Discussion. First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Wilbur. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Any carries? Okay. Add to infrastructure. IT 1, resolution authorizing budget modification for department solid waste, highway and street equipment. Second. First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Wilbur. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Any carries? IT 3, resolution establishing capital project number 96, Mill Street Bridge over Nine Mile Creek. Move on. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Holt. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Any carries? IT 4, resolution authorizing a expenditure from unappropriated fund balance, capital project number 97. Move for discussion. First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Twist. Any questions? I don't know if we're almost pretty much up to speed on this as far as the carries. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Any carries? And then EP, EP 1. Resolution authorizing budget modification to accept and disperse Oswego County opportunities in section 5311, operating assistance funds.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in fact.
For the committee's clarification, there's been some confusion in how these were numbered and inserted into your package. So, the title that you see for EP 1 is actually numbered EP 3 in your package. And EP 2 is, um, actually EP 1 and EP 3 is EP 2.
These were outdated with the committee members in the last prior to, um, so if they picked up recent packets, they should be accurate. We just want to make sure that those go on to the floor as they should be numbered.
But on the agenda, um, they may be numbered wrong. So, the one that you just, the title you just read.
Yes.
Is accepting operating assistance, and that's still EP 3, or you made it EP 1?
It's EP 1, it should have originally been EP 1. So, when it goes to the floor, it'll be EP 1?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve EP 1.
As a matter of fact.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Any carries? EP 2, resolution establishing capital project number 94, authorizing the chairman to accept and disperse related funds. Move for discussion. First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Wilbur.
I'm ready next one.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Any carries? And EP 3, resolution establishing capital project number 95, and authorizing chairman to accept and disperse related funds. Motion to move for discussion. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Twist. Any questions? Oh. Again, yes, yes, all right. I looked over, no response.
My, I'm just overhanging, you can't see it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Any carries? There's nothing for help committee. HS 2, with the resolution authorizing department of social services budget modification to purchase computer equipment for Medicaid staff. First by legislator Lockwood. Second by legislator Holt. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Any carries? HS 3, resolution authorizing department of social services budget modification including creation of one position and deletion of one position. Let's move for discussion. Oh, where are you now? Understand. First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Wilbur. Any questions?
So, I honestly, I looked this over, I talked with legislator Rehill about it. I just can't, can't support it right now. Um, I think there's a better solution that we can work out with the county treasurer. If he's willing anyways, I think that we could coordinate, or he would be able to coordinate, uh, some kind of, whether it's training or what it is, make it a little cheaper for us rather than the $7,000 actually. That's just my opinion. But I just, I can't vote for it. I think that we could do a better job by coordinating this with the treasurer, like I said, if he's willing, have to take it off.
Do we could say something?
Well, no, I mean, that's what this committee desires. I mean, no issue, I think what we've done, we've definitely improved the working relationship in the last year. And I think our needs are very similar. And, I mean, I don't have, you know, an issue doing that. And I think we can present a plan. I mean, obviously, we have to work closer together and, and, yeah.
I'm gathering this, from what I've read on, this is a position that's kind of tied between the two.
Correct. So, it's an, this is an accounting position, but it's kind of.
No, it really, I do understand that there was a position approved two years ago for DSS to have some oversight by the treasurer's office. That has never been realized because of the short staffing in the treasurer's office. For us, it's a matter of people working out of their title. So, you can certainly table it today, but I believe there will be some other steps taken.
I just want to point something out. I have a feeling that any job within Oswego County, you could say you're probably working on a type, pretty much any job. So, to me personally, I don't think that's an excuse. I mean, that's just my opinion. And at the bottom of almost every job, I can't remember the exact thing, if it says perform job as, or duties as required, or I can't remember what the exact statement was. So, that doesn't work for both sides.
So, perhaps Carol can speak to what happens in the process when people file a grievance for working out of title.
Okay, yeah, no, I'd be happy to address that. So, essentially, when an employee can ask for review on his or her own behalf, and by that I mean, appeal directly to the HR department to say, I think I'm looking, doing more than my job description requires. At that point in time, we review it and we have to have a conclusion. Yes, it is, it does warrant an upgrade, or it doesn't. Um, if it does, and, and requires, as Stacy's doing, bringing it forward for approval, then that's one step. But if not, then, and we've identified there are things that are not in title, then the department had, and even if, even if, um, an employee brings it forward and it is decided that it is out of title, the department always has the opportunity to take away duties that are not within the description. So, it, that's, those are really the options. You can't really just say, if there are things that are being done that are within, are clearly out of title, then really the correct thing to do, the right thing to do, would be to remove those duties and assign them to a higher level staff member.
Can I ask what the wording at the bottom of every single?
Well, that would be, performance other related would be, things are changing always. So, something, you could have new tasks assigned to you that are different from what you've done, but as long as they're within the right classification. So, um, you know, that happens, but then if it truly requires something higher, then in turn this employee, the classification system, then that has to be reviewed. So, it either, you know, either take them away, or, and sometimes that can be debated. An employee may think because they're doing more work, you know, just, it's gotten busier, it's, but the work that's assigned is really still within the classification. That doesn't warrant, more work didn't warrant necessarily a higher classification. But if it's different and unique work that is, is of a higher level, then sometimes it does, that's required, a separate classification.
I'd also like Veronica to maybe speak to just what happens with claims when there's errors. Do you want me to speak to that?
I'm here to answer questions. So, the biggest reason that I am asking for this is because we're claiming almost $30 million a year in return revenue. And it's difficult, right, in having two people in the entire department that actually can look at it and understand from an accountant's point of view, what they need to be looking for and how to forensically find errors within that claim to make sure that we're getting every penny back that the county is entitled to. And that is really causing, you know, myself and the other accountant to work a lot of extra hours. Having to do a lot of extra work with the staff who are working out of title to produce those claims for the county. And so, it's, it, it's not something, not anything to cut them, but their department doesn't do the claims. We do all of the claims and we do all of the reconciliation of those claims. And we reconcile it against the county's revenue stream that carries the department of social services and munis. So, all of the work is being done by us. If it was something that we had to work with, the treasurer's office on, I would have to go to the state because there has to be a separation of duties. And so, we, this, it would be a whole different process to allow the treasurer's office to actually come in and do any of that work. Because there is, you know, the fiscal reference manual is 790 pages long and I'll be happy to supply it to any of you who are having problems sleeping at night. But, but there is a clear distinction, even within my department, of who can handle money, who can reconcile that money, and it can't be the same people in any, in any step. I have to have a separate person doing every single step. And I have to prove that that's how it's happening when I get audited. Which, by the way, starting Monday, the state will be in my building for a full audit on all claims.
Yeah, the consequences of error is a, it's a big piece to evaluate and draft. What is the consequence of an error? Unfortunately, we have a history over the last 10 years of many errors that have cost us literally millions of dollars. Could you address the example that you found the error? And actually, you found the error for the whole state. Was it October's claim?
The RF 2A claim for Title 20 child welfare was never settled out for the entire state of New York for October 2016. And when I was trying to get the numbers to fill last month, they were not coming out right. First, we go count, and as a result, I sent an email to the state and I said, why are my revenues off by almost $200,000? And the state looked into it and they got back to me and they said, nice catch. So, we're waiting on the revenues to be relooked at and for our settlement to come in from that.
So, my, uh, my intention is to make sure that, um, it's not just by chance we find these, but that we have higher level staff who can actually dig into making sure that we are receiving every penny of our state and federal revenue. If any of you would like to come in to see examples of what we're talking about, because I know it's kind of hard to picture. You kind of have a picture of a checkbook and, and it's not like that at all. It's accrual accounting and it's, uh, it's a mixture of what you might think of as coding with insurance claims. But for us, it's claims for the services we provide. And as well as making sure that all of the forms are complete. And then the state does their job. You know, it wasn't until recently that we actually reconcile and make sure we're getting back the state and federal revenue that we actually claimed. And a lot of companies don't. They just trust the state and the feds are going to send them their money. Veronica and I aren't that trusting. But we have, uh, we have exhausted all other means to try and make sure our bases are covered. This is our solution.
Just to clarify too, I don't want you to think that I waited from our, the October 2016 claim. The settlements for the October through September of 2017 just came in December of 2017. I don't want you to think that I waited all that time.
Yeah, um, like you, legislator Twist, when I see a request for a new position or an upgraded position, I look at it skeptically. And I look at this one skeptically originally too. But after, but I sat down with chairman Rehill and commissioner and Veronica and went through this position. And we spent quite a bit of time talking about it. And I came, I believe, uh, legislator Rehill feels the same way, but I'm not going to speak for him. I came away convinced that, number one, that it's graded properly, that the level of work they want this person to do, it's in the right title. Two, that there are people doing the best they can there and as accountants and account clerks. But that they not at a level of education and experience that would provide, that provides the quality assurance and quality control that's needed there to avoid these errors. And I believe that if you've got a person there at the right title level, right education and experience level of doing this accounting work and quality control work, your claims are going to, you're going to get reimbursements that you, far and above the $7,400 you're going to spend. So, I came away convinced that this position is necessary in this book. It's not like that. I don't see that very well.
Yeah, I just want to say, though, I have, I have an accountant, not even a senior, that handles, you know, the responsibility in our office on this is a little bit more than $7 million. So, I think that by doing this, I think I'm going to be on your doorstep, looking at, probably making online deputy treasurers. So that I can figure out how to maneuver through the system of civil service and with the openings that I've had. So, it's a, it's a touchy subject. The interaction between the two, whether, whether anybody wants to admit it or not, DSS and treasurer's office has to communicate appropriately together at the same levels. So, if you have a directorship or if you have a senior accountant, a senior counselor be able to reach across to another senior accountant, chief count, whatever, however that works, has to be in appropriate layers. Or else you're just going to go down and everybody's going to be, remember now, the middle of this table, you have the three people that are bidding on the job and you're trying to retain the ones that are the best. So, that also plays in this factor. So, the employment pool is very limited. So, you have to figure out ways to, to try to accomplish what you need to do within your department and keep people. So.
Yes, thank you. I guess I got a couple of questions. I know Stacy, you had mentioned that perhaps we could table, and I guess that's, thought is still out there. Thank you for your willingness to help. But I guess my statement would be, why don't we know this at budget time? Why does it wait till three months after the budget? How many more examples of this are going to pop up? And I'm not picking on you. You made a compelling argument for this person to help and, and I could certainly see where the returns are potentially there. Although it does put maybe some other departments in jeopardy. But it just kind of baffles me that, you know, we really just started on this budget a couple of months ago and now here we've got to go change.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to make an excuse that, you know, it was a first closeout of munis and we were, you know, really stressed. We were working many, many, many long hours. There were definitely thoughts about what are we doing here in our fiscal unit? What bases are being covered, or what bases aren't being covered? Those discussions have been had over the past year. You know, I was hoping that as the dust settled, we might get more reporting, somehow munis might streamline things. It, munis is a good tool and we have adjusted, but frankly, it's created many more steps, much more work. You know, we're, we're taking on the raise the age, we didn't know where billing was at at that point. We didn't think we were going to have to take responsibility for all of the billing. We learned that last week. You know, on and on it goes. You know, again, Veronica, do you have any input on why we didn't do it at budget time versus now? Well, that's true. We, we were told pretty clearly not to ask for positions and we didn't.
The focus was, the difference between then and now. The focus was, the focus was on legal, building the legal team.
Yeah, we, we were scrambling for that too. Yeah. I do try and keep all the balls in the air, chairman, I really do. But sometimes it's a matter of, you know, how many things can you kind of pay attention to all at once? This is certainly these, these errors that have popped up, especially during the closeout of the books, have rattled me.
And I don't, and I don't need to put you directly on the spot, but is this, this is a person that we have now and we're going to reclassify?
No.
Total new, brand new person.
Correct.
Can I say something else? I used to hold the accounting supervisor job before I became the director. Pretty much, the work that I did as the accounting supervisor is still on my table. Because when, there was some shifts made at DSS that was fired to Stacy by Greg. And so, when, um, when those shifts were made, all of resource and recoveries, we, we had a resource and recovery coordinator who did fraud and resource recovery. She came to my department and with her, she brought all of the resource recovery. So, you know, right now, you know, the $4 million of money that's owed to the county, to the department of social services, were required by different laws on how we have to make sure these people know that they owe us money, or else we can't collect it. So, that got all brought with her. In the meantime, we also took on all of the contracts. Currently, right now, 66 contracts in the department of social services and 14 pending. And so, we're doing all of the contracts now. So, a lot more work has come into my department with no added people. And we're trying to keep all that on board. There was some things that were out to other directors that really belonged in finance. The monitoring belonged in finance. They've since been moved into finance where they belong. The state does have requirements on a lot of these grants that we're the ones that are monitoring it. And so, things have gotten streamlined and done correctly and they're where they should be, resource should be with accounting. But at the same time, we need the people to do this work. And so, we have taken on a lot more additional work. And all of that has mostly fallen onto the accounting supervisor, Grady D. And it's not in her title. She's supposed to be doing this other stuff that, you know, has gotten handed down to some people in some cases. And then in other cases, it's with me. And she's doing some of it as well. So, there's a lot more work and with the same number of people. And what we really need is just some higher level. Need people that understand the forensics of the country.
Is there anyone else? I just had one question. I mean, you said there wasn't a person there that you're wanting to upgrade, correct? And just because, where would the grievance come from? You said it was a pending grievance, am I missing something?
No, it would be people working out of title, you know? So, if I'm an account clerk and I'm doing something that, you know, an accountant should do. And I'm making a lot of errors, you can't fault me for that because I'm not really supposed to be doing this. It's that kind of thing.
So, this position is vacant now? Correct.
Well, we don't have a position. Oh, the one that we're giving away? Yes. That one's vacant.
So, that could probably be part of the issue too, considering you already have a vacant position with nobody in it. That is supposed to be aiding in some of the issues that you mentioned that you were doing. Could be part of the issue too. I mean.
Can I ask you something about that? The part-time positions has turned over 14 times in the last six years. It's impossible to keep anybody and the work involved is so detail oriented, but as soon as you get them trained, they go to a full-time job. Because there's literally maybe a dozen people, I don't know, taking the account clerk test each time it's offered. And the list goes like that.
Yeah, the part-time, you're not hiring from a list. But you're saying they move on to a full-time as soon as they can get it, so that's impossible to maintain.
So how many accountants do you have now?
Well, you know.
But don't you have other senior accountants in there too?
Well, we have, Bill Martin is a senior accountant. Yeah, yeah. Implementing training, all the WIOA, all the federal money that comes in, and he takes care of all of that.
Yeah, is this a testable position now? So is it going to be like the junior account position that takes six months or eight months to fill? Because is there a test schedule?
There's not.
So you're, you're done with it? You're, you're done with it? I mean.
They will fill provisionally, with the understanding they have to take the exam and certify. Qualify to the exam process.
Yeah, there's no easy answers here.
Can I just put a dead one? I don't know if we can discuss, can we, can we assign a task?
Thank you.
I'll rescind my motion.
So the task can be scheduled, correct? Or we, is there a reason why we can't go forward and schedule any tasks for that?
No, we can only schedule a exam, that really is.
Because that, it takes a while to do the system.
But you can't, that really doesn't hinder one from hiring and harmonizing from hiring, because they, that happens.
But, but if we can at least get that emotional with the committee, you know what I mean? Because that seems to be the longest process in this whole.
All right, I'll make a motion.
First by legislator Wilber, second by legislator Holt.
And what would you like me to bring back next meeting after you take one?
Information we look for. I'm assuming that you, are you going to correlate, like we were just saying, with the treasurer's office?
I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. And not to mention, once you upgrade one individual and one department, it's going to affect others. I think we're opening, while you may, I'm sure you need the position, I'm not saying you don't. I'm just saying we need to, there's other factors we need to, that need to be factored in.
I think we could do it just perhaps a different.
The impact on other departments may be best addressed by you, Carol. I wouldn't really know how that would trickle down and impact other accountants and other. I don't know who has accountants other than the treasurer. I, I'm certainly willing to bring back whatever you need me to in tabling, I'm just not clear. Sure, write your questions down, and we're happy to provide whatever information you'd like.
Okay, thank you. The motion on the floor to table, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any none? Any carries? Next, FP1, resolution authorizing a full-time treasurer to increase property tax, foreclosure administration fee. Motion to the, to the discussion. Moving forward, first by legislator Holt.
This one is a three hundred dollars from two hundred, and that doesn't cover the three, that's the title search. But it is an increaseable, it'd be, you know, offset the cost.
Understand, any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any none? Any carries? FP2. Everyone should have, and. Everyone should have a, the amended version. It is not, we need to make the amendment to that. Understand, so the, the right hand on those. Understand, resolution authorizing the reclassification of one position in the treasurer's office, account clerk. I understand this needs to be amended. I mean, how does that have to be amended?
Do you want me to cover the amendment real quick? We're removing approval of government force consumer affairs, because it didn't cross us through that committee. Senior needs to be added to account clerk, in front of account clerk for the reclassified position. It's a senior account clerk.
Understand. The amended for motion, motion to amend for a discussion for legislator twist. Second by legislator Wilber. Any questions?
Well, let me explain it real quick. We have a person that handles for projecters that is older medical. And don't tell me the other day that she'll probably come back for a little bit and then be back out on something else. So this person obviously will work within her, her title currently. But if she does, she will be recruited by someone else within the county, and I'll lose her. And there's no step program for helping pay the employees for what they do. It's a minor adjustment in pay that will be employed through the vacancies that I currently have. And you will go down, and I'll, I'll be losing somebody else Monday, so we're three, three open, or three people out. And she just offsets this, and like I said, she's being recruited, and I, you know, I have some other people trying to be recruited from my department. It's the only way in the middle of the ring that I can keep them.
Understand, any other questions?
No, I, I meant, when I look at this, I look at it from a classification standpoint too, and that's really what drives me more. Oftentimes departments will bring that forward, but that can't be the reason for a classification change. So this had to be reviewed, and there were additional tasks, as Kevin said, that will be, will be reported.
Understood, any other questions?
So this won't affect your budget this year, it's paid for by vacancies, but it will increase your budget next year.
It may not, because the person that's leaving this, Monday, his, that rate of pay will drop. With the new person coming in. Pretty much, pretty much.
Any other question? All those in favor?
That was the motion to amend, but the original motion?
Yes.
We got to go back to the original.
Right, you only had one motion on the floor. So I'll make a motion to amend it as per the legislative legislature. You only had one motion on the floor. So that was introduce the resolution. Now you need a motion to amend it, then go back to the original resolution as amended.
First, second, whatever that is.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Now the amended version. First by legislator.
It's already up.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any none? Any carries? FP3. Resolution authorizing professional services contracts with community resources department employee benefit and workers' compensation consulting services. First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Lockwood. Any questions? Would you like to say anything, Carol?
I'm just, I'm glad to be at this point, this is an extensive process. He's had a lot of time looking, very good vendors, difficult choice, making a change on one half, one side for the health benefits and retaining the workers' comp benefit consultant. Hopefully, we'll be looking a lot of good things in their health and workforce benefit.
Would you? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any none? And the resolution authorizing the execution of agreement with the Assured County Deputyness Association? Very happy this is. First by legislator Wilber, second by legislator Lockwood. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries? I want to, I want to give a review, decision, vacancy review.
Would you like some more review, Mr. Chairman, or the department may review if you'd like?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
So nine-one-one, actually, the nine-one-one director has three positions that have been vacant since twenty eighteen, and backfills behind the new position that he just had approved for the higher level technical position. So, and he's ready to have a training session scheduled, so it should be, he had needed to bring them all together at once to move them.
First by legislator Wilber, second by legislator Lockwood. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Facility technology, John has two cleaner positions, one full-time at the public safety center, and one part-time at DSS, and he's also asking for the remaining backfills. He promotes one to be, moves one from inside to the more full-time hours, and then we go from back to part-time positions.
One uncomfortable, move the news to block. First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Twist. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any none? Any carries?
And we're reaching off speculating, we're engaging services. Actually, Sarah has two vacancies. She had thought that she would keep one vacant, and then when she had a second, she said, I can't leave it down two. So she has come forward to refill one of them, one of the vacancies. And this was for an individual who's going for a permanent training.
First by legislator Wilber, second by legislator Twist. All those in favor? Any opposed?
The next is in sheriff's department, correction positions, one sergeant duty retirement, and they're asking also for that resulting backfill, when that's, when it's going to be promoted. They also had another correction officer who resigned. And then the three resulting backfills based on an earlier resolution with sergeant positions. Those three, well, three internal officers will be promoted, and this would be to refill those positions.
Those must block. First by legislator Wilber, second by legislator Holt. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any none? Any carries?
Social services, maybe first have two community service workers, and they're seventy-five percent reimbursement. These were two backfill employees who were promoted, so instead of even using them, they were promotions from inside. Again, this is an assistance programs, so important to the mission of the agency.
I'd like to move those to block. First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Wilber.
Are these vacant, are these the only vacancies right now? Or, I mean, caseworkers, are they just not on there?
Caseworkers, we had agreed earlier that we would bring those through.
I was just curious what the updated number was, though, including.
On the vacancy report that you'll see at the end, there are downing vacancies. I think there are only five on this month, so it looked like.
There's probably closer to eight.
Okay.
I can tell you, as of today, we're supposed to have thirty-nine caseworkers in rotation just for our investigations. It's a twenty-four hour a day, seven-day response. We have thirteen in rotation right now. Because people are not trained to go out autonomously, they're in court, they're tied up in court cases. One-third of what we need to assign to go out, we do not have right now. So it's, it's not at all good.
So I understand, so they're tied up in court, that's part of their job too, so I'm just, I don't know.
Rotation means when an investigation comes in, and we get, you know, about three hundred a month or more, you rotate through thirty-nine caseworkers, hoping that none of them got more than seven new cases in a month, and no more than fifteen cases total, that they're carrying at any one time, and we have caseworkers who are investigators carrying forty-five or fifty. So it's still very dire.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
We also have two typists. Again, one is an income or an internal promotion in the assistance program, seventy-five percent reimbursement. And the other is resignation in services, sixty-two percent reimbursement. Again, we need a very limited clerical staff to have to fill these.
First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Lockwood. All those in favor?
Solid Waste has two. Solid Waste has two positions, and one at the energy recovery facility and assistant loader operator. Limited four, four-person crew on shift at a time, and if that isn't filled, then it results in overtime. So Mark is always looking to fill that ASAP. And a vacancy in the Solid Waste division for a heavy equipment operator. Again, a position that was pre-served and was a good one, and they need that position also.
Understand, the promotion moving up the block. First by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Holt. About Stacy, we make a motion.
Or I'm just really stressed now. Thank you, legislator Twist.
All those, all those in favor? Any opposed?
And one last in treasures. Unfortunately, they're losing a junior accountant for resignation, and are asking to replace this. This person does obviously everything in the accounting area, Munis mentioned, I know, like some of our HR, health insurance, all the money coming in, I mean, help fund, so, a lot of money coming here.
Motion to move. First by legislator Holt.
You want to watch it?
First by legislator Holt. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any none? Any carries? Do we have to, if we do have to do a motion that changes.
And that I usually would work for informational purposes, Kurt sent it every year to notify the human purposes that we, it was changing our clerical staff, so.
Motion to move that? No, I shouldn't read it, huh? Change in the work rate for office staff in the highway department? So, thanks for, for us, second by legislator Wilber. Well, there were some questions about that, actually. Somebody had asked me, how can we don't do that early? How can we don't do that if this, it starts in July?
No, it starts April, pretty good.
Doesn't it start with the gankel line there? Somebody had asked me.
Yeah, it was me. Clerk's office and treasurer's office start in July. Summer hours up.
His code starts with paving season. Whereas the rest of the offices are just summer.
Well, I guess it's somewhat related. Why, what would be the, the problems if we moved your hours ahead?
You may have, we would have your employees downstairs.
We're not, we don't want that.
I think you could do a month, probably do a month before, a month after, instead of just, I think it's January, third of July, and August.
Then county law, no? I thought there's for the summer hours.
There is, there is some state law that, that says the treasurer, at certain hours, the treasurer's and clerk's have to be open. I wanted to kind of try and take a look at that first. But the original reason we did that was just during summer, and we didn't do it earlier usually because schools still end, and there's transportation problems, so we do it during summer for the office staff in, around the county. But Kurt's people change early.
I'll, I'll take a look at that. See who's got their new shoes.
As long as you have to do the normal hours, vacant, less than employees can do.
Because you'd be there, right? Go ahead, say that six, right?
Understand, all those in favor? All those in favor? Reporting departments.
Okay, sales tax. The committee has a sales tax report, actually on the top you have capital reserve report, then you have your old task report for the reserves, that you serve up every month. And then you have your sales tax analysis, which for this year is lagging about fifty thousand dollars. Or, up seventy-six, I'm sorry, last check was fifty-one thousand. So if there's any questions on that, we'll move into the annual report. Any question? Had a real good year last year in sales tax. We'll see where it follows, I guess, obviously today with the price of food oil on into May and June, so maybe a good, good sales tax here. Okay, so moving on to the, there's some black and white copies from somebody that really wants to dive into this. I know you just want the reserve, or capital reserve. So here, the committee has, I'll have Robin just briefly, any questions after, carrying whatever, please speak up.
Hey, thank you.
Just want to, I just want to say, the big, one big influence on this, being able to do it now, is ESS. They were, they were pretty much like my act of saying, she does a lot of hours. We really put a little bit of pressure, asking her if she could, you know, finish up, and she did. A lot sooner than I was in United States. So she did a great job, gets us to do a great job, giving us information, as well as all the departments, so that we can finish this up and get the, get the reporting to the state, so we didn't, you know, raise a flag, so. They did a great job. Okay, now it's all yours.
Now it's all, okay. All right, everybody got a copy that, that needs one or last one? Okay, so, first slide, page, is that page two? I think the most important thing that everyone is wanting to know is the fund balance at the end of 2018. Came in about thirty, thirty-one point two million. It's up two point two from 2017. The, the other items on this page are just, it, it's all part of the fund balance, but these are earmarked for special items. Our retirement, actually on the, on the top row, went from one point five in prepaid to one point three. So that was a reduction from 2017 to 2018.
Kids.
Kids, kids. All right, page, page three is a graph of the figures that were on page two, and also page four, kind of gives you the total fund equity, fund balance and the reserves. Page five is all of the funds, fund balances compared from 2017 to 2018. County road came in at four point four mil, up six hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Road machinery came in at five hundred and eleven, up two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Capital projects. Assigning, unappropriated balance was, in 2017, the fund equity was three hundred and eleven. In eighteen, it's two, a little over two million, up one point seven. The bottom funds are the workman's comp and the health insurance. In 2017, workman's comp was a little over a million, in 2018 is one point four negative. Both of those numbers are negative. On the health insurance side, went from seven hundred and forty-six in 2017 to three hundred and forty-eight. Page six is the reserve fund analysis, which we give this to every month. This is just the balances as of twelve thirty-one eighteen, for your records. I'm sure you keep all of them right there.
Everyone.
Everyone. Page seven, it's budgeting analysis, we're between 2019 and 2018. Our appropriations increased three point one, the revenue increased one percent. Total net appropriations increased nine. One of the reasons is the Fitzpatrick plant, going back on the back roads. Page eight, budget appropriations and revenue analysis. This is just taking the appropriations and revenue and comparing them to the previous years. Page nine is a graph of those figures. Page ten is the amount to be raised by real property tax, spanning over two thousand nine to twenty nineteen. Shows you a history of where we were and where we are now. And again, the, the numbers have changed mainly because of the Fitzpatrick plant back on the back roads. Page eleven, comparison of just the expenditures from 2017 to 2018. These are actual figures, not budget figures. It, it goes down through, and all of these categories are the state categories, they're not necessarily. Some of our categories may kind of end up in a different category than the state on this. So for instance, if you're looking at your cultural recreation, you can see that it's gone down to a hundred and eighty thousand. However, some of our other, because our, some departments kind of overlap each other, they could be, it could be up in a, in a different category as far as the state. Page twelve, it's just the revenue comparison, actual numbers between 2017 and 2018. And again, these are state categories. Page thirteen is a balance sheet for the internal service fund, which is the health fund and workman's comp fund. Shows you your assets liabilities, your revenue that came in, your expenditures, and your net fund balance. Page fourteen is a self-insurance expense analysis, it's analysis analyzing from two thousand eight to twenty eighteen. The expenses, the expenses for. Page fifteen, this is a sales tax revenue distribution from twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen for all our municipalities. Page sixteen is a graph of those numbers. Page seventeen is the town revenue distribution for 2018, includes sales tax, mortgage tax, and snow payroll. Eighteen is community college tuition charge tax by municipality and by most of the big colleges. Page nineteen is a graph of those. The last two pages, I always include, I believe they're in the back of the budget also, the county full evaluation and mayor tax rate comparisons from twenty nineteen, twenty, nine to twenty nineteen, and the tax rate calculations comparison twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. Yes.
I think on page eight, we both may have took the graph.
Hang on, is that page? Page eight? The budget appropriations and revenue analysis?
Well, it says on the right side that the revenues other than real property increased three percent. What in your columns, that would be the one percent one, right? I might have got that wrong.
The three percent is for the appropriations, the two hundred and nine thousand.
But on the right side, it says the revenues other than real property increased three percent. And it should be the same.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, on your, on my.
Your brother's watching you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Is that all you can find?
That's just her. How could we have said something later, did? We were looking at it.
And along the same note too, Phil and Steve are going, they helped you, yeah. No questions? I'm sure you'll have some, please try to.
Motion to, for a motion to accept the budget report?
The first.
First by, first by legislator. All those in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? There are none.
No.
Or carried?
Has everybody got everything going around? There should be, we should have free handouts. What is going around is, the big handout is a twenty-page analysis published by NISAC. They, these people are living this budget twenty-four seven for the last two months. They know it probably better than any county at this point, so I like to start with their analysis. So what I, what I did is try to summarize, twenty pages down twelve points, may impact us the most. This, and you can refer to the, if you want, you can look at the screen up here, where it's a little bit, where it's simplified things. This budget continues the governor's preference to pass law and policy along with the budget in order to leverage changes he wants in public policy. And this year's no different. It is different about this year, the past few budgets have been not always that great for us, but somewhat neutral, there's pluses and minuses in each one. This, pretty much universally is, from the county's perspective, has been a very bad budget year in terms of what it's going to do to the counties throughout the state. So I just want to summarize some of those for you. First of all, I kind of color-coded this, green is good, and there's only like two slides in here that's good, where it's green. So these are things that aren't, these are things we've had concerns about that are, they can get passed. One is the marijuana legalization, the other is that bottle bill expansion that would have hurt our recycling programs. The governor also tried to get a one-year restriction on payments to the counties for this public defender program expansion, remember they're giving us a lot of money each year, and it's going to grow to about three million a year. He wanted to withhold the first year of those payments, but that did not get passed. And lowering the interest rate on judgments to, to federal law. So that's only four things they can get in, pretty much everything else you've been reading about, they get in some form or the others. One, blue is if, we don't know the impact of this yet. Energy service companies have been exempt from charging sales tax for a number of years. That exemption has been removed. We don't know how this affects us yet, because in our Seward County sales tax law, we exempted home heating fuels from sales tax. So we're doing some research now to determine whether this is, this overrides that portion or not, and whether or not there's going to be any revenue coming in from that for us, at least from the ESCO sales, and not any others. So that's a stay tuned. Internet marketplace fairness, this stems from the Wayfair versus South Dakota Supreme Court case, that said that because of changes in the way the world does business, sales tax collection is no longer limited to businesses who have a physical location in the state. So there's now, a sales tax has to be collected for all internet sales. Most internet marketers, like Amazon, were already collecting it and sending it to the localities in the state. But others that are third, like third-place markets that, like the Amazon marketplace, those who aren't direct selling through Amazon, no sales tax is being collected on them, even though they were supposed to be. So the law has been updated and changed to collect those sales taxes, which you would think would be an overall good for us, that we gain a bit more sales tax, and it's good for our Main Street businesses, because they're put on more of a level playing field with the sales tax. However, the, this also opened up an opportunity for the state to shift the cost to us with the, regarding the aid to municipalities, and that's a red. Red is bad. What we feared happened, did happen, despite almost every county weighing in against this. The aids to municipality, that is a state obligation, is a state program for decades. And one of the handouts you have, the black and white one, shows you the state aid that was going to the municipalities in Seward County. What the state has done is decided, well, first they cut it, eliminated it. Everybody screened, and the solution they came up with was to restore it, but not pay for it themselves. They're going to intercept our sales tax to pay for their obligation to municipalities. So what this means to Seward County is a loss of a little over half a million dollars in sales tax revenue. This is going to start, they will, they will begin intercepting our sales tax in June. They will cut the checks to the towns and villages in December. And I can already see what's going to happen, is that villages and cities or towns will get, get their check with a New York State's name on it, and no mention that it's actually for us. So I think it's behooves all of us to maybe remind our, our municipalities in December that that money is actually coming from the county. Now, another thing that it's important to understand and convey when you have discussions with town officials is although they joined us in opposing this, this cop, they may now think that they're going to be made whole, but they will not be, not entirely. They will get their full allotment of aid to municipalities, but the way the state is doing this is by intercepting it before they ever send the sales tax money to us. They're reducing the total amount of sales tax that we receive before we apply our sharing formula to it. So, for example, towns that get ten percent of the, of our sales tax, that ten percent is now going to be on a total that's five hundred thousand dollars less than it would have been otherwise. So they're, they're, they're going to, they're going to lose a bit, and that's going to depend on the correlation of each, each municipality. So they're not going to be fully full. Election reforms, you've heard a lot about that as well, when all that passed. They did include ten million for early voting costs to help reimburse, just under fifteen million dollars for the purchase, to reimburse for the purchase of electronic poll books. That money is going to be apportioned out to counties based on their percentage of the overall registered voters in the state. Poll hours, for all poll hours now for primary elections have to be from six to nine, to the founding, or to encourage voting, and employers now have to give time off to people to vote if the poll, if their normal work hours are, are such that there's not four hours before or four hours after their shift available when the polls are open. So we should be okay, because, you know, we generally open at nine and close at five. That period of time, five to nine, is four hours. But other people who work on ten or twelve-hour shifts, we would be forced to provide three hours of paid time off to their employees to vote. So we're probably going to be good, we won't get forced, so it's a, kind of a higher department or anybody, you know, sheriffs. Most of our employees are nine to five, but you have highway, you have sheriffs, nine-one-one, the ride, driver shifts, yeah. So even if they only need an hour to go do it, we're not going to get banged for three. So, yay.
At least.
A long line, sorry.
A lot of excuses, I hear.
There's been a number of. There's been a number of changes to the justice system, which probably the sheriff and the DA can talk to better than I can. And the DA is putting together a custom pack for me. There's a lot, there's a lot to go over here. It's almost better to go through the, what's written in the longer packet. But what the governor wanted in terms of bail reform, mug shots not being public information, officers having to release people on appearance tickets for certain type of crimes, unless it's a domestic violence or previously been charged with felony, things like that. It's probably an appearance ticket. I put it, I put that as an iffy and maybe not so bad because it may give us some leeway in terms of fewer people in the jail. But it will also create some other problems, I appreciate. 15, this is one green, this is the one green on the slide. $15 million extras for senior citizen services. Our Office for the Aging will be able to access some additional information or money for senior citizens. They expanded the ability to accept private pay insurance for some of those services. And those who are up to 400% of federal poverty will then access those services. So it's an expansion of those services and some additional additional money there. Agriculture. $53.2 million for agricultural programs. 30 of that, or 33 of that is for agricultural initiatives. One is for the general programs that have been in place for years. I don't have verification yet whether that includes funding for the ones that we most often been interested in are AAA and West Nile virus control, mosquito control monitoring in the Radies program. I'm waiting for confirmation of that. Infrastructure. CHIPS and Marcha Cellar level funded, but there's no extreme weather repair monies approved in this bill. They, they may take it up, is the word, as a separate bill later on in the year. What is maybe positive news for us is $500 million has been set aside for clean water infrastructure. 200 of that is earmarked for local governments that are undertaking water and wastewater infrastructure projects. And I know there's been an interest in a couple of projects in this county, so we'll be looking into if we're eligible and how we go after that money. Elimination of PINs reimbursement. Beginning in January 2020, the county will no longer receive reimbursement for costs associated with persons in need of supervision. DSS is working on what that reimbursement impact is going to be to us. There's a lot more involved with changes to PINs than that, but this is the monetary impact. We'll report that once we know what it is. Property tax cap was made permanent. It was going to sunset in 2020, I believe. It was made permanent with no changes. So some of the changes we wanted were the same exemption school districts have for capital debt. What schools have to pay for capital debt, they can exempt from the formula. We cannot, though, which hobbles us in a lot of things that we might rather want to do, but if we did, then would put us over the cap. Just some, I know the tax cap is politically popular, but there are some things to, I'll put it in perspective and why it's questionable in terms of being sustainable public policy. For example, the cost the state keeps shoving on us. Those increase our property tax levy, you can't control it. For example, the new AIM cost shift that I just talked about. That $500,000 is over one-third of what we are allowed in our next tax gap. So that's eaten up one-third of it right off the bat. The other handout I gave you, the colored one. I did three comparisons. The counties got together and came up with a list of mandates for all the counties to calculate their costs, to add them up and compare them to their cost levy. So this list of mandates is by no means complete. This is, these are the ones that they sort of settled on to concentrate on. And what you have is a list of our costs based on our 2019 budget. And for each of these, the ones that are asterisks don't include calculations for the cost of employees needed to deliver those services. So actually, if you did that, the cost would be a lot higher. But as it turns out, the costs listed here are $59.8 million. And that's mostly just programming costs and not employees. Your tax levies combined, operating college and workers' comp is 55. That works out to, the cost of these state mandates is 109% of our entire property tax levy. That means basically all the, that equivalence is all the property tax collected by Seward County pays for state program. Now, I went a couple steps further and compared it also to the sales tax revenue. Let's forget about property tax. How does it compare to sales tax? And the reason I did that is this intercept of our sales tax by the state is something new, and there's a fear that it's going to increase. One of the, what you're hearing from the governor more often is that counties were allowed to create, collect sales tax in the first place in order for them to pay for their proportion of Medicaid. And that is true back when that happened decades ago. However, the state has added more mandates. So I wanted to compare the cost of these mandates to our sales tax revenue, the portion that we get to keep, not the part, not including the part that goes to the towns. That's 34.4 million. So these mandates are 174% of our sales tax revenue. So although the state looks at us and say, "We're making more sales tax than Medicaid costs," they've actually lumped on more costs onto us over and above that sales tax, over and above that sales tax and the Medicaid costs that almost twice what our sales tax revenue is. I also took a look at what state aid, the sum total of all state aid and reimbursements the state gives us for both mandated and non-mandated programs. Turns out to be very similar to where our sales tax revenue is. So again, the mandates put on us by the state cost us 174% of what they give us. So they're basically, it's costing us twice what they give us. These percentages would be greatly higher if we added in the personnel costs, which I didn't do frankly because that's a, it's going to be a very complicated cost allocation calculation. And I, I don't know if I really have the time to do it. It'd take a few days. Basically going through every line and the, every personnel line in the budget, figuring out how much of it's mandated or not. So I thought that was a good perspective. While the tax cap is permanent and it's popular, the question is raised, is it sustainable in a state that forces so much of its costs onto our tax levy? Over and above what it allows us to raise in tax. Ban on plastic bags. This set out to be an initiative good for the environment to remove grocery bags from floating around in our forests and being in our waste stream. However, what finally came out of it was a law that bans those bags, but it also doesn't ban many other types of plastic bags. So that doesn't fully solve the problem. And there's a list of them here, and it's expanded to find it in the analysis I gave you. So we're still going to have these things in our waste stream and in our environment, but on top of that, the state gave counties and cities the power to impose a 5-cent tax on every paper bag that would replace these plastic bags now. And counties and cities can opt in or opt out of that. The way this would work is they would be charged that fee by the vendor. And even though we would impose the tax, the state would collect the money. And 2 cents of every 5 cents would be given back to the county for the express purpose of buying reusable bags for low-income people. Reusable grocery bags for low-income people. The other 3 cents, the state would divert to the Environmental Protection Fund. So we're sort of being put in a position of, well, we can impose a tax, but we don't get the money. The state gets the money. So it's, it's, and you know, so you've got a law, you have a law now that may or may not increase the use of paper bags, which are made from trees. And it's intent is to increase the use of reusable bags, but we'll see what really happens. So this is, it's put us in a position to decide whether or not we are going to impose this tax on our people.
I think we can make that decision right here, right now, and I'll make a motion that we don't impose the 5 cents. We impose that completely. I mean, it's something banning plastic bags. And I know we've had issues with selling waste and everything in the past, but why are we going to put a 5-cent tax on every paper bag that's out there? I mean, then you're going to kill more trees and everything else to produce that. So no, I'm making a motion that we, we do not impose the 5 cents.
I'll start. Any discussion on that?
Hardly agree.
Hardly, we agree. We're not going to impose this 5% tax.
We live in a state where we're already taxed to death.
Yeah, to death.
We're definitely not going to do that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Very none.
Final slide. And I thought this was the best way to end this presentation. In this budget enacted a trigger. If the state budget begins to look towards the end of its fiscal year, like it's going to be short $500 million or more, the budget director and governor are empowered to cut up to 1.02 billion dollars out of any expenditure they want, with the exception of public assistance money, anything that would violate federal law. They can't reduce their debt expenditures, and they can't reduce anything court ordered. Anything, everything else is on the table, which means everything else I just talked about could be completely undone, especially the grid. Any reimbursements we're counting on, they could sweep it and say that they have to balance their budget up to a billion dollars and just reduce any expenditure they want, either in their own workforce or reimbursements to us. Typically, that 500 million is reached about every year, but they've never triggered it before. So we'll see what happens.
Well, that's a lot of good analysis.
Well, it's nice to acknowledge the constitutionality of that. We have a legislature for a reason out there. I mean, it's no different than all these other committees that they're putting in for pay raises and everything else because they don't want to do their due diligence or their job that the legislature's going to elect them for.
Okay, and I encourage, that is, I encourage you to read that longer analysis because part of this is, if that trigger is reached and the budget director comes out with a plan to cut, the legislature has a certain number of days to come up with a counter plan of its own. So that's where some of the details that I'm, that are in that analysis. Does anybody have any questions?
About the election, you know, with the early voting and stuff, but yeah, some kind of talk of these electronic poll books, they weren't going to be required? So was that, they were always going to be required?
Well, since they funded them, I think they're required.
I know there was discussions in the past, we didn't, we thought it was amazing, but it's not.
Right, I mean, they're not going to put $15 million in their budget for something they're not going to require.
Just my standard reports at the end. I won't spend my time on those if you have any questions. You know where to find me. One additional sheet that I added was routine activity summary from 2018. Oh, 2018, I'm sorry. It's just helping to turn things.